I know.
Well, one to start. The colors will come out in a little bit. Alright, it's seven o'clock. Amy? Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. Okay, um, roll call. Um, Mrs. Debbett?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. What's the language?
It's David.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Uh, this meeting is being recorded for informational purposes. Is your name and join us in person, join us on the floor, whatever. Amy?
Okay, um, I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting. Uh, we're meeting the minute.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting, tell them the pause.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call please.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Debbett?
Yes.
I'd also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the payment on the bills for the month of July. Because we tailored it in July. In the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Like, I made a motion to pay the bills for the month of July for two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second. Discussion. We'll call please.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Debbett? Yes, Mr. Self?
Yes.
Um, I'd also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the minutes. Or not the minutes. The payment on bills for the month of August in four hundred, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept the payment on the month of August correctly from one hundred and sixty-seven, five ninety, sixty-one. Yes, that's correct.
Second. Discussion. We'll call please.
Mrs. Debbett? Yes. Mr. Self?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the financial statement stated eight twenty-three, twenty-four that I gave.
I make a motion to accept the financial statements, eight twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call please.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Debbett? Yeah.
The communications were.
Uh, no. No.
He doesn't want to write in writing, he doesn't. Uh, at this point, uh, as we normally do, we'll take comments if they're on the agenda either jointly. If you have questions other than the agenda, we'll address those at the end of the day. So, this time if there's any questions from the audience on the agenda, either jointly, but we have in front of us. No questions. Alright, we'll log in, please. Thank you. Um, for the month of August, our officers responded to five hundred and thirty-eight calls. Wrote seventy-five reports, one of which were a crash report, seventy-four incident reports. We had nineteen arrests, two that were drug-related, three firearms-related, two theft, D and E or burglary-related, two assault, domestic violence, protection order violations, and two more arrests. We issued twenty-eight traffic citations, three for driving under suspension or no operator's license, two miscellaneous equipment offenses, four miscellaneous moving offenses, one operating vehicle intoxicated, fifteen speeding citations, and three seatbelt or child restraint citations. Calls responded to five with burglary or rape and injury-related, six assaults or domestic disturbances, two criminal trespass, three vehicles and most criminal damages, and fourteen thefts. Uh, one of those thefts, an additional nine damage event. We had one reported sex crime, four threats, menacing, which involves harassment complaints, uh, two drug overdoses, nine fights for disturbances, fourteen calls for suspicious activity, four calls for suspicious persons, and eight calls for suspicious vehicles. Uh, we had a hundred and two service calls for the month. Twenty-five parking or traffic complaints, seven, we assisted seventeen disabled motorists. Uh, had twelve animal complaints, twenty-one are wanted for officers. And their officers patrol eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six miles using eight hundred and ninety-two point four gallons of gas. Overtime, total overtime for the month was a hundred and thirty-one hours, one hundred and eight regular hours, and twenty-three reversed hours from rates. That is all for today's report. I think I have two other things on here. Any questions? Chief, if I have any questions, I should know this, but I just noticed it's a little elevated. What exactly, uh, is your wide category or a service call? Um, service call would be anything outside of our, our, our normal, um, our normal report calls, like domestics and flights and stuff, but yeah, service calls are self-initiated or, or things that don't fall under a general category, um, like helping, uh, you know, look for people, uh, missing kids. Those types of calls, not general, like burglary theft. And yeah, we, we were quite high this, this month. We were really good. Alright, thank you. Yes, um, second thing I have on the agenda is, uh, I'd like to ask for a go shoot to hire, it's going to be glad it says eight part times. We saw a certain rate of eighteen dollars per hour with no benefits. Tim brings over forty years of experience in police department. Offered to come in and help cover some shifts, he knows we're, uh, we're pretty tight. And he offered to come out with uniform, kind of pick up some of the, some of the things we can't fill. And, uh, I'm sure there's plenty of other opportunities if, uh, brought forward. I'd like to make a motion to hire Timothy Glass as a part-time officer to rate eighteen dollars per hour with no benefits.
One second.
Any discussion?
Yes, thank you.
I'd appreciate it, Tim, we know we have some, uh, list there, so. Can we just, well, friends, uh? Thank you. That's, that's appreciated. Pleasure for serving the community. We'll call please.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Debbett? Yes, Mr. Self?
Yes.
And the only other thing I had was, is just wanted to give you guys an update on a renewed issue of the town. Um, we discussed, uh, issues where, yes, rural safety concerns. Uh, areas like sixty-two Broadway, lower Bay tree area, uh, where we just couldn't get out on our radios, we were having issues. Then on top of that, uh, our voter site at the old stadium at the school. They had the new stadium, uh, running this last Friday for the game, so they're ready to start this condition, power everything there. So, we've discussed that portable antenna that we had, just portable tower down at station fifty-one. This morning, um, my cross and I thought everything except, uh, erected. I went around doing some testing, and as of right now, all of our troubles for us that we have to disrepair have been depleted. So, uh, we were able to get out of portable zones, we weren't able to get out of the four. Uh, so, you know, fingers crossed it's going to cover all the other areas or any areas that we didn't check. Uh, but that should get us by until the, uh, Mark's tower's up and we switch over to the new. So, uh, the new tower is up in, within ten. Right now, we're up here.
That's good news. You know, very good station.
Anything else for our mission? Fire chief?
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. For the month of August, we ran a total of two hundred and seventeen emergency calls for service. Of those, a hundred and fifty-seven were EMS, three structured fires, seven motor vehicle crashes. Uh, we had no vehicle fires, we had nine miscellaneous fires, we had eight service calls, thirty-one reports of wires or trees, two firearm investigations. We neutralized into the township twenty-two times, went out of the township twenty-five times. We had thirty-eight responses at Hartford, twenty-one in Bryan. It's totaling to two seventeen, excuse me. We had a hundred and two total hours of overtime. We used a total of four hundred and three point three gallons of unleaded fuel, a hundred and thirty-two point ten gallons of diesel, totaling five hundred and thirty-five horsepower gallons. The, oh, uh, the new ODNR volunteer firefighters assisting grant, Wildland gear, has been received, issued, and will be submitted for reimbursement on Wednesday. The kitchen and shower product, projects at Firehouse eighteen are now completed. Station fifty-one was closed, forty-five by sixty-two possible shifts. Still waiting, you guys sent you an email today about being due next week or this week sometime.
Yeah, I think, um, probably maybe Wednesday, you said you're not available, Thursday.
Thursday, I.
Oh, Thursday, Thursday afternoon.
Alright, we'll talk after.
Okay.
Set that up. That would be to, uh, fill the open firefighter position, the full-time firefighter position. Uh, we did have the five-year aerial test, it was conducted on September fourth, uh, it did pass. I get to receive a report on that. Uh, the title was received from the FDA loan, the ambulance, uh, all the information you sent to town for today to get those one-up deals. And that's all I have for my report.
I have a question, I'd like you to prepare your time to talk about. About the, uh, that was, that was a good plan, the date of August twentieth, a lot of thought in that night. Our box there.
So, which letter?
Uh, dated August twentieth.
Okay.
About the, uh, some of the future funding issue.
Yes.
That practice. You really did a nice job summarizing it, so thanks. So, at some point, with tonight, you're hoping to not be getting to talk about that specifically. That whole project, the funding issue down there.
Yeah, I think, honestly, I mean, I don't know how trustees feel, I think that'd be immediate and so, probably.
That's fine, just make sure you get this. There's a lot of, a lot of good information in there, saying, you know, in the location of the mission, the funding streams. Uh, my request would be much like the road level. These trustees got that thing, they don't have, we can't, you know, we can't coordinate. So, we have to, we're a lot of community support to get that. As soon as we start getting all this, at a certain time, I think the better. Uh, because that helps, I'm sure if you pass the road level, more information, there's a lot here, you know. People will realize that, that not only want it, but someone show up. And if you don't have the manpower and equipment to do that, you can do that. So, I, I thank you, a lot of time after, so I want to make sure we address that, and especially when you're there, sooner the better.
Okay. In other respects, Mr. Chairman, there needs to be a lot of discussion.
Absolutely, is what we, I am ready about.
Oh, I, I would definitely say that's what I'm asking.
So, we, it's not going to be, no, no, let's just do this, we're, how about that?
That's why I'm bringing up.
We can't wait till the last hour, the sooner the better. So, yeah, we, we're gonna have several meetings, much like we did for the road, and at least my suggestion would be, the more we get to the public, we get to come in and ask questions and.
Absolutely.
To Dan's point, yeah, this is not a, uh, an easy decision.
So, the information is.
Totally complete. Alright, my question is, this is a meeting for the next couple of weeks, if at all possible, for that month. Okay, thank you very much. So, I just want you to know that I didn't read in the short, the trustees said, well, so. I think this is potentially a certain question.
Okay. Real quick, I didn't, I don't have the, um, letter in mind. It was actually right now, I don't know if anybody does the truth with our boxes or data about the, the kids. Could you explain that to us again, real quick, we want verification.
The junior fire academy.
Yeah, junior fire academy, um, and you're looking for us to okay that?
Yeah, I'm looking, um, I've been talking with, uh, my personnel, and some of them have approached me as well. And we're interested in putting up junior fire academy in the latter part of October. And what that, what it entail would be a Saturday and Sunday where we invite, um, applicants. But we would take twenty children, ten on Saturday, ten on Sunday, and hopefully, uh, both days would be exactly the same. And it would be just like a fire academy class, where we would maybe swear them in in the morning and, uh, give them. We're looking at possibly some turnout gear, uh, from a local donation, and, uh, you know, running through some different drills, different things, set for their age, but I think they, I think the letters, third, fifth grade, are the ages that we're looking at, so.
So, you're just looking today, is, is see if that's okay?
Yeah, I'm looking for your support and it, so I can begin to, uh, you know, send applications out. Uh, I was hoping to maybe start distributing. Fire prevention up, coming up next month, before that, and getting kids excited.
Um, does that make any, okay. Okay, not your location, no, no, I'm good, I just wanted to show you.
Just support for me. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the trustees are okay with this, we'll be using the option facilities. Um, I do have waiver forms and, uh, for multiple things, not only for injuries, but for like pictures and videos and social media and things like that. That, uh, I've spoken with other departments and use their, their waiver forms and word of approval, so. Thank you.
Anything else for the fire? Jamie?
Yes.
Do you have some more?
Yeah, I do, I'm not. Uh, I'm looking for support from the trustees to accept and distribute the Ohio Impact Ambulance Industry stimulus funding. Uh, it's specified for the purpose of employee retention. This is the second round of stimulus that we've received, and, uh, we're looking to make, uh, looking to, uh, provide for our employees a one-time benefit for job retention. Dana passed out, or Dana gave me the numbers on it. We received, and I was looking at that, final allocation of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars to be distributed. We originally applied for eighty thousand, that was reduced by twenty-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen, equal fifty-five, six eighty-one. This would allow us to, like I said, give a one-time bonus retention, or bonus to our employees for job retention. The cost of the township, the final cost after everything, is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents out of township money. And I looked at the budget, and according to the financials that I received on date twenty-two, I saw a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars approximately EMS salaries. And I'd like to take that, uh, fifteen, seven ninety-four, sixty-five from that line.
Yeah.
Did you do that, or a motion, Dana? So.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, to accept the industry, dish to, the Ohio Impact Ambulance Industry stimulus funding. It's specified for the purpose of player retention, by the.
Some second? I'll, I'll second my motion as presented. Any need of discussion? Discussion, we'll call please.
Mrs. Debbett? Yes. Mr. Self?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Can I? Oh, I know. Um, can I do that, then, with an X K, yes?
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, I think, this would have indicated, you wanted to separate.
Yes, you did, you did want it separate.
Yeah, so, so that doesn't affect that. Right.
But it's still different. Why don't you?
Yes, right, yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, thank you for your, your attention. That's all I have. Ah, true.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the month of August, we had one thousand seventeen regular hours worked, uh, seventy-three overtime hours. That was primarily, um, the two thousand twenty-four payment program, whatever involved. Actually, inspections, we ended to inspect or actually doing work for the payment. Takes us to a total of one thousand ninety hours' work. Uh, we had twenty administration, five hundred and twenty in the road projects. Again, that was all for the most part, baby. Platoon road maintenance, we had fifty hours. Quidditch maintenance and repairs, we had thirty-four hours, we had a rollover of some iceland courses we had to repair. Uh, two hundred and fifty hours at cemetery, we had one burial and three cremations. Thirty hours shop time, miscellaneous, we had fifty hours, road information, four hours, and that was. Some of that was Wildwood Sworn Tour project, we had some information, we had to get in accounting for that project. And, uh, some of the two thousand twenty-five, we submitted the application for our two thousand twenty-five, uh, issue one grant. It's in, so we'll, uh, I think the meeting is, I want to say it's next Tuesday. So, that's the three-minute, give you your best shot for your project, if any of the trustees are interested in it.
That's an E scale, yeah?
That's an E scale, we're next, now, yes, that's correct.
You're going.
Yes, I'll be going. So, if anybody wants to go to the front, you know, we can ride together, if you're all separate, that's fine. Shannon, have you been talking there? You have not.
What's the time?
Uh, we're B, so they go off ethically, so we're probably nine-thirty or something?
Yeah, I'm up to eight-thirty, so maybe.
Okay, let me.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I did, I did, I did call and get that to nail down.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want us to be late, yeah.
Okay. Um, we had a hundred and thirty-two hours at the park. The road department used one hundred and forty-two gallons of gasoline, three hundred and ten point three gallons of diesel fuel. The cemetery used a hundred and twenty-three point one gallons of gas, the park used eighty-three point five gallons of diesel, or excuse me, gas. That's all I have that are important, I need questions on that.
I noticed you're doing, you had no work with science.
No.
I, I did not, I guess, I don't know that.
That should be this week. Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna go to item one. Uh, basically, I just want to kind of go over what, where we're at with the two thousand twenty-four payment program. The, uh, both the grant project and the road project, all the payment is complete. All the burning is complete, the ceiling is complete. The only thing we have left is we have the cemetery sewer, lids have to be raised. And then the county and myself will get together, watch this, go over anything. So, if you got, if you got any follow-up or anything, we got a little bit of work to do with Taylor Street, there's a little burning up there.
And, and you said completely. It's not because Wildwood and Old Red Lake?
Yes, there are two, two, two parts that, uh, the grant has one road, Wildwood and a little bit of Crestwood. So, S B ten, that will happen until next year, because we've got a storm, so the project on Wildwood, we're gonna be doing this winter. Uh, the road project, if they all break the cane, will be completed this year. But I think it's gonna be in October for that final payment.
So.
Yeah, I'm gonna take that back. It's going to be ninety percent complete, it's gonna do the coal mix and the choke, which is basically a fine dusting of number nine, to keep the, keep the, uh, keep the pavement from trapping, till the cars meet it in. Then next year, it'll do the seal code, it was on top. It's the weather's too, the weather's not making it for sealing.
So, do we hold back a part of the?
We won't pay it, we won't pay for any of that, that's been completed.
So, you figure out that percentage?
Yes. Yeah, the county will go through and they'll calculate what, what's been done, what's, should be paid, what shouldn't be paid. And I'd like to say, we almost went two weeks without having one of our roads already cut, so. Lake Stream was already a water lot, right, and they cut it last week, so. That's like, it's like a new car, I told him, I said, I'll sort that right away, you know, I won't be a second.
I'm an eight-month-old, I don't know.
Yeah. Uh, the next item is a, um, document. So, rural contractors, they can take draws of what they've completed so far, and this is just for the grant project, so they're requesting a payment on the grant project. Uh, so they'll, they apply, they can pay for what has been completed so far. The county's already done the paperwork, finished with all the numbers, they have all the, um, payroll certifications, everything that goes along with that project, so I have to get the N U signed, and T N U signed. And I don't, uh, in the old days, this would all be done via paper, but now it's all done electronic, so I have to go on the website, download the paperwork, send it to them.
Do you electronic sign?
Uh, I don't, I don't have.
It's easy if you're gonna file electronic, or do that through electronic, right?
Well, I have the topic, so then it's gonna be hard to find. I don't know if that would let you do that on pay, pay up. So, while I'm doing that, I'll just kind of talk. But, yeah. There's, there's, uh, Dean, so they need your signature and your program, and then the trust itself to sign. So, so the invoice does the three hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, Ohio Public Works is paying their portion, is, is twenty percent of that, so sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And Ohio Public Works will send a check directly to rural contractors. We, we found that to be easier because then it doesn't have to go through Tina's books, uh, and it just makes it clear. And then Brookfield Township will send rural contractors, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents. Yes. And I'll, I'll make a copy of this for the trustees and put it in your box, so that you have, you'll have the data there. Uh, you'll be other hand, why I said that, and the important from, uh, county. The, the other one's with the payroll, so you'll need that. Thank you. That's it, that's it.
Should that be a motion, Dana?
That you've already, you're trying to make it.
I know, just make a sure.
Even if we don't say anything, so.
Yeah, technically.
No, we need to get motions already on it.
Yes.
Pay, right, for those. Um, I'm, I'm marking anyone here, but, uh, I think, department meeting, we discussed that I had truck at the, uh, Wood of Detroit Diesel. We had some manifold problems, they were in process to get it apart. They gave me an initial cost estimate, seven thousand, to repair the manifold. So, uh, the manifold is in the back of the engine, uh, the, uh, underneath the, like, the by firewall, underneath the, uh, floor, firewall floor. So, you have to take a lot to get to it, so I said, well, if you're in there, if there's anything else that needs, I shouldn't have said that. If there's anything else you see that needs repair, that's kind of the issue, let me know. So, so they called me back, and they said the EGR cooler is bad. The EGR cooler, basically, I, I'm a decent mechanic, but the way they explained it to me is it, it takes coolant, and shoves coolant back through the exhaust system, kind of cools the engine. So, the EGR cooler is bad. So, they, they got back to me today, and they're waiting for service, because that's where the parts come through. Uh, and so they're telling me that they think all our favors could be another five grand. So, that puts me at about twelve, twelve to fourteen thousand, somewhere, to get that truck repaired. Unfortunately, this is, uh, the, this is our two thousand and fifteen, uh, five-ton truck, and it's the newest truck. Unfortunately, this is, uh, the, this is our 2015, uh, five ton truck, and it's the newest truck that we have. So I'm kinda stuck.
What's the value you have to pay it for?
Probably 35, 40,000. But it costs 200 to buy it, though I guess that's what I was gonna get after, after my expense, so it was 200.
Budget?
I, I have it, well, I didn't budget it, if you didn't know, but I do have it in my repair plan. I think it's just 25,000.
Anything you have an option?
I, yeah, I'm kinda stuck, so.
You need a motion for that?
Yeah, I'd like to get a motion.
Do I ask a motion? What that estimate is between 12, 14,000?
14, yeah. I can't give you the exact amount, because I can't give you the exact, exact amount. I make a motion that, uh, we have a repair cost for unit one, 2015 international dump truck from Williams, Detroit Diesel. 20 minute estimate of 12, 14,000.
What's that?
Initial discussion. Call them, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Let's get it.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to the next item. Um, we have looked as, as the president's, uh, board does, we put in the generators, like both buildings, the, uh, here at the, at the administration building, that down the fire station. So that, this generator was, this whole building, our generator was, the whole building down there, including all of the fire and, and the road department. And I guess part of the idea was to make that, the fact of all of the heating and warming.
Yes, shelter, emergency shelters, yes.
So, but down, down at that building, we have, we have a gas well, so we get free gas. Right now, if, if, if the, uh, we run on the gas well, unless we get real cold temperatures, sometimes gas well will, you're pulling too much gas, it won't support it, we have to go from, uh, gas well gas to city gas. So if somebody physically has to run and turn the valve to do that. So as part of the generator project, we met and looked at it and talked to the company that put it in, and we thought it would be a good idea to have typically most houses that are automatic, so. Once the pressure on the gas well reaches, goes down to a certain amount, it kicks, it kicks the city gas on, so you don't have to go out, turn on the gas, turn off the gas, does it open that? We thought that's probably a good thing to do, because we have a pass, and that's on us. So, you know, the gas went out, usually it goes out at the fire department, because there is something on gas. And then they go out and switch the gas to, to city gas, but then when the temperature goes back up, no one remembers to turn it back to well gas. And usually what happens is, you know, your gas side, bill is high. Okay? So we thought it'd be a good idea to throw it off that way. Uh, the price they got from the company that installed the, the, uh, generator, you know, the gas pumping and everything, had the, uh, was 60, 61, 50. I thought it was a little high, but he said they, the switch, the switches and stuff were expensive. Uh, I don't think there was a lot of labor, he had waited down. I don't think there was a lot of labor in there, but 6,150 dollars.
I get a couple of questions. One is, okay, that's that, can we look at a couple of others?
You can.
Uh, for him to say that, I'm not being, but that's one vendor, so we can take that for, uh, that's a lot of money. And the other part was, uh, and I don't know, since that was a part of a project that you wanna explore, that's 6,100 dollars, because it's part of that project, they use ARPA money.
Which are the quotes?
At least to explore, to see where other ARPA funds are, that would, that would be right along with that project.
Finish down the title.
Yeah, and then that's an 80,000 dollar for those buildings, uh, project, so I, I would, it's more close. I, that ARPA.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I have no idea because I don't know what these are, that cost. So, okay, I would make some quotes and just, uh, table that until next week. Uh, next item. We talked about, and then, I wanna kinda get a clarification for, or if this is not, I won't bring it up again. The unloading loading zone, the green, uh, next year, they're gonna be paying for Route 7, which will include all around the green. And we still have that slag part, who, I, I call it unloading zone. Still have that slag unloading zone. I thought it'd be a good idea to finally get that, that, uh, finished and get done. The estimated cost, this is the concrete, so it'll match up with concrete sidewalks, curbs there, is 28,000. Which would include that parking area, that, that waterway, paved waterway, down to the catch booth based on the load part.
I mean, of course.
Uh, two, one, uh, and both, both, uh, township, that's some precision concrete and crating, I'm not sure if a lot of the concrete breaks. So what is your answer?
The only issue that I see for putting this to ARPA tonight is anytime you spend ARPA funds, it has to be a separate resolution of the authority. It, it falls well within, uh, the qualifications of ARPA money. But one thing I don't wanna do is make a resolution to do it, if you're not gonna ARPA and then come back. Because what we got to jack up is something else we're using. Once you expend that money, let's say you paid it out of the general fund, you can't, then use ARPA funds to repay the general cost. Yeah, if you wanna do it separate, but actually with the other.
I, I, I have some questions, so.
One thing, words and sentence, I got. Well, I think, I don't think to make a motion to use ARPA funds, because.
Not a bunch of funding, sure.
Yes.
All right, my questions are, are these, number one, with blacktop fees, it doesn't be less than that?
Uh, possibly.
Uh, another point is, uh, that's a lot of money. We have others, I think, not that this is important, but like, area going back to your maintenance, the park law here. And again, I know you mean, uh, discussion earlier, would the state be part of that, or could we include that in the bid?
Yeah.
No, why not?
They're, they're not gonna let you tie that.
Would the salary project give you an honest opinion of the scale?
Yeah, they did. They did, even if, even if you, even if you offered to pay it for it, they're not gonna let you, because they already did these contracts out there.
So where's it now? It's awarded?
Uh, I don't know whether it's awarded yet, or it's already been designed, and I don't think they're gonna let you have one.
That'd be kinda like saying, who pays for his driver?
Basically.
Yeah, but this is, this is different, this is right wrongs. I would like, so you asked.
I can ask them, I can, no, I didn't.
I would ask them, yeah, I would say.
You asked them.
No, I didn't. I asked them.
No, you didn't, maybe I'll, but ask them to do the whole thing, which are now it's.
They said they're resting, they're resting.
And remember the clause, which shouldn't be fucking there.
Revision, because I, I think we have legislators might raise up to the office that.
I just would like to.
I just, nothing should be done, but on a scale, it's important.
Yeah, right now, we know at least what it's gonna cost, so if we get down to, to maybe a 50,000, 28,000, we can just chuck it out and make it happen. But if we could, I would like to add, the end of the answer to ARPA, maybe we can, because we have to sit down and, and dance over that.
We should do several ARPA meetings. One thing we don't wanna do is be stuck with an excess of ARPA funds, and it was, right, so we need to start.
But for now, I think, I come up with, at least now we know what this top costs. The main thing that I think we need to work on next is the parking lots, because we are all three, we might, we might discuss that.
You do.
The parking lots is, is a hundred percent of those, so trying to figure out what that is, what it costs.
You said parking lots?
This, and then the, the parking areas.
You're just talking here.
Yeah, and then you would say.
Yeah, I just think if we look at what it costs to fire a road, maybe we couldn't do it all.
But like the image.
To pass, you know?
The well.
Do anything down there to, to get back that thing.
So.
Yeah, maybe.
When you get pricing for that, right, but rather with the money in there than this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we have all these magical buildings that we put in. But they, I don't think it's right. Um, magical. But I would, I mean, at least if you have a number associated with that spot, now, so I could revisit it, but I would take that.
I'm, I'm, I'm quite honest with you, I wouldn't say no, yeah. Um, I, I see if we're going to improve it, now is the time to do it. And the fact is, are we ever gonna have the 28,000 out of our general fund, with the road, the pavement, or something? I'm not saying that we should use ARPA money, that, that, you know, just throw it around. I, this, this is one time money. So I agree with what they both say, but don't put a zero, don't put it out there. Now, that's, that's still a, sure, maybe, that's better.
Putting minus. And I will talk to the state, because the state, the state may agree to pay back to their right of way. Now, if they, if they agree to do that, their right of way is back there. It's less, but they're not gonna do it in concrete, so I, then I would think you could switch it to concrete to, to light. And then, I don't know how you, you'd have to wait till they're done, and you have something to finish. But that's the end of the contract.
Are you sure that's?
That's what I was doing.
Very sure.
No, that, that, the Wildwood project, no, because that's considered a grant, Brookfield Township receiving from the commissioners. It doesn't, but our projects in-house have to be in the contract, I asked, I just thought we were going to meet. Uh, that is, uh, because the commissioners really has already spent that, because we have to check, it's already a challenge.
They're getting, they're getting me there. They're getting me there, President, that's, doesn't have to be.
No, the Wildwood project doesn't. Well, unless they're, you know, we have the same term, we have the county and we, and Brookfield Township have the same term. I mean, I talked to her on the phone, I can call her again, if I misunderstood her.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood that.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Danny?
Uh, we, we talked about providing ARPA funds for the, um, cross call work that we're doing on All Red McKay as part of the payment program. We had put 2242 by, inch pipe out there before they paid that, so I had asked maybe 10,000 to contribute towards that project.
When you have to have that, we agreed to that, we agreed in our last, uh, ARPA, need to 10,000 dollars.
I think we.
Well, that was.
Yeah, I think that was a big. Yeah, it was a big.
But once again, we want us to vote on ARPA funds, elaborate ARPA resolution, we wanna make sure we do it right.
If you're gonna do it, another ARPA meeting.
Yeah, I would like to see.
Yeah, that's fine. Because we don't need tax, we don't need, right, this. And then, and the other thing we talked about, I'd like to get the lesson from the board, at least to go out and get some prices on, on starting a store building for our equipment. At the road department. I have, I, I did my budget, some money put aside for that purpose. I'd like to get, I'd like to try and get all the, which sits out the weather, because we're still. So it's a, it's a long term, my, my vision is probably to do the work in-house, but to do so much every year, and then budget for that purpose every year. For example, to maybe do the, we do a structural building, maybe do the pillars, the structural part of it one year, and then back to next year, do the roof. Then follow you, maybe do the sidewalls, just as we have the funding, you know, and, and. I think we need to get our, out of the, out of the weather, and some protection.
I, I agree. Um, and it's a piecemeal, probably, some of the way we're gonna do it. My, my question is, um, we've discussed this with other departments, it's happened this year. Uh, I wanna, before we make some of those, okay, we're gonna obligate, I think we need to have a sit down with the fiscal officer and go, okay, where are you getting this money from? The last thing I wanna have, because we spent a lot of money on the roads, I know that we have a program, uh, we have some that we're gonna, for next year, to deal with ARPA or with that. I wanna make sure we have enough money. The last thing I wanna say is, well, you know, we, we start to put this building up, and we're never gonna be able to create it, it's just gonna be some lies. Right, we need to do, we're talking about, you know, I know that these are deeds, but all this request for money, I wanna make sure, in my mind, yes, that money's there.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not saying you wouldn't do that, you're very, very fiscal responsible partner, but we have to be, as trustees, we have to be very careful that we don't overspend.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you, because we gotta look, we gotta look down the, you know, we're, we got money obligated in the future also.
For this month.
For the loan, for the projects coming up, we have another grant of mine for, so we're, so we're gonna make sure we're, I think we're okay. I, I have a problem, more than what I'm looking at too, that we should, gotta have something.
Yeah.
So I'll put a maybe there, too.
Well, that, that one, we, I think we, would you think, because of the technicalities of it, because you're aware, ARPA is such a wordy, uh,
Yeah.
resolution that is required, once we, now that we need to get this going, I think we need to move on.
You're more familiar, I think, than, than I am. The next item is the cemetery thing, so if I can, I'll, I have one more item, it's just an informational item, that wasn't on there. And, and this is for the trustees. We're, we're gonna go, soil and waters are gonna be, basically, an education, as part of the MS4 water, soil and water management program. We have to get training handed here, so soil and water, markets, and, and area with the soil and water. Usually try to set up some sort of training for us, not just us, for all the road and, you know, some, some trustees, but. So they are gonna have some, some training on the MS4, uh, it's control measures one, two, three, and six. We don't usually typically do it with the old anything, but it's, uh, control measure six, which is soil and water outlets. They gotta look at the outlet, the source points every year, submit and stuff every year to them, to say, well, we're supposed to be doing. But they, they put this out, so September 19th, from 10:00 to 11:30, they're having training at the soil and water, which is in Corbin. And they said, if any of the trustees would like to attend too, because it's, it's more than just for road.
For example?
It's 10, it's 10, 11:30.
Now, you said your department, but there, uh, this is your, your department, is that everyone in your department?
Yeah, I'll take care of it, because they, because they have to have the training, so. And I have to, I have to, well, I have to submit forms and say they have, have the training, so. And we usually take all the guys, you know, the hours, hours of training. But I just wanna throw it out, because they put in a notice that made, uh, trustees that want to attend, we're also. Okay, that's it for the road portion. Uh, ready to have a question? Okay. Uh, cemetery, I just have one item in the cemetery, just to, we, as part of the, um, storm sewer project, the call work project on All Red McKay, and the road widening, we rented the escalator, which is part of that 10,000. So they rent the escalator for 1,900 dollars a week, uh, or they rent it for four grand a month. We're at it for two weeks. So if we rent two weeks, it's about 4,000. It's about 4,400 for the month, so we're gonna keep it for the month. So after we finish this week, I'm hoping to finish the widening there, and we got two more columns out there to replace. I'm gonna ship it over to the cemetery, because we have, remember, there's a couple more roads we need to put in. So while I have that machine, I'm gonna think, uh, have at least one of those roads, and then we'll fill it up and build it, so we'll have that road. Have the pieces put up here, I was, I don't really, I mean, I have a lot of time, but I want to utilize the issue, maximizing your, yeah, so. I just wanna let the other work. So we'll, uh, if you're familiar, the roads that go around Colberg, there's another, like, square, that's kind of the next section, we'll, we'll, right, and I will deal. Junior High Park, we'll do that, that piece, so that's what we're gonna be doing. Uh, that's cemetery. Last. It is, and just I want to get permission to do this, I think, uh, Dan, you know about, I know Shannon and her, far on, it got some lights in there. Okay, with the lights on, you feel that part? I don't remember where you got the O A P. I don't remember where he had the O A pump, but he got some, some big lights, and he stuck them in there. Building that, by feel for, the end of the parking lot there, by feel for, right below the bathrooms, so they've been in there for.
Long time.
Long time. Yes.
Seven years?
Yeah, at least, we didn't. Yeah, and, and they're, they're, I mean, they're just old, and, so, what I'd like to, I was happy to mention, is to scrap them. And, and they're ready, so we can kinda get that going clean out.
Do you know if the youth league was involved in that, or?
I don't.
I think we should check with them. I don't have a problem with, with, they're, I, by what I was told, by them, they're updated, it's, you know, the technology, the, like, whatever they're. But I think if they were involved in that process, I was wrong, because it was not here.
Do you know if the youth league was involved? I don't remember, I don't think so.
We can ask by now, just to make sure before we scrap.
That's fair.
That's it, Jamie?
That's it, that's all I have, thank you.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
What's that motion? Shannon, if you were.
I would give all this pity tonight, but I do not feel this, feel very, so.
Bring it, bring it here.
Yeah, um, Colonel Officer, needs reports, Toronto County Building Department issued since our last meeting, six fourteen Bedford Road, uh, Hope High School. Instead head start classroom certificate of occupancy. Fifteen thirty-five Standard Avenue, Woolmood's, uh, progressive edition new building. Eight sixteen Bedford Road, uh, roof existing, over existing porch. Sixty-nine ninety-one Cherry Street, replacement. Uh, complaints eight one ninety-nine and eight two oh seven Edmond Street, hydroax and weeds. Seventy-eight twelve Second Street, trash debris occur. Eighty-seven thirty-three Ford, shared room property is going through share sale. Reinsturbing process of cleaning up exterior progress. Six sixty-two Bedford Road, general condition of swelling. Fifty-six seventy-four Breeze Wood Lake Drive, general condition of swelling. Seven sixteen State Line Road, trash debris in rear yard by alley. Eight oh four Valid Drive, standing drainage water complaint. Seventy-nine nineteen, merge street vehicles, weeds, eighty-one ninety-nine, Range Street, trash debris complaint ongoing. Now, eighty-two forty-three, meet street junk vehicles, open dumping. Elm Park exists, so progress has been noted. Elm Street Broadway area, inoperable vehicles, and apartment building parking area, notice of violation has been sent over to. Ten ninety-two, Yankee Run, grass exterior maintenance, notice of violation has been sent to owner. Eighty-two thirty-seven Lincoln Street, junk vehicles in three, notice of violation has been sent to owners. There's been address assignment. Six oh nine Collin Grace Road, parcel number, uh, new single, uh, family, and on living, still, it's exciting. That's all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, it's one thing that I can. We collected sixty-seven dollars, uh, two hundred and seventy-two miles driven, it's yet, eleven and a half hours. Spin shot one, crew hack eleven, we ran it over twenty-three five. Very appreciative of our volunteers who are driving the van, uh, we are, uh, we have additional drivers, so, we are, uh, putting more hours in, more miles, and I appreciate that.
Just asking a question. Uh, one of the reasons I came here tonight was, I, I may be interested in, in helping you out as a driver. However, I'm eighty years old, it's not a both that matter.
I don't believe it.
I don't think so.
We, we do a background, uh, check, it's funded, you know, if your driving record's good, I don't, I don't believe it. So, whoever I need to see, uh, or Red out here is, uh, she's not here now, but her office coordinator, her name's Tabitha. Anytime during the week, eight to four, come up, and she'll walk you through what you need to do. And we really appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, the home business. Got it, new business? New business?
Um, I'd like to ask trustees for a resolution, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county office.
Those are just the curms?
Yeah, these are the current ones that we have.
Do you need those, uh, those?
I don't. I think you guys just need to okay them, and then I need to notify the, whatever. I have to send them a copy of.
So, the motion is to accept the amount of rates that Mr. Tom, Red. Please do. Okay, I make a motion to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county. Any discussion? No, just over the fact that they are listed here, they're quite lengthy, I believe we have seven fire levies, six police, uh, and a road levy. So, uh, they are available for calling. Hold call, please.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stedden, Mr. Saddle?
Yes. Initial on dinner, new business, important, most important discussion, kind of trick or treat topic. Yes, uh, I, I had looked at, only one, not that it really matters, but, uh, thirty-first of October is on a Thursday. You have to be careful, it's on a Friday football, uh, and I don't think we should have it, we have it five to seven. Like, see, we have a trick or treat, do a thirty-first and five to seven. Any other questions, Mark, please, Mr. Parker, do you think?
Is that a date, bad, and good? No, I think traditionally, the last few years, we've done it, there, we've, so.
Yeah, it was only time, you know, and some people, if it's on Sunday, if somebody said, why don't you just have it open all the time? It's on a Sunday, since people have issues with it, and then a football, later on, that's, that's critical, it's right. No problem. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have trick or treat, Brookfield Township, on October thirty-first, between five and seven. Any additional discussion? Sorry, can we post on our website? Hold call, please.
Mrs. Stedden?
Yes.
Mr. Saddle?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Okay, now I need to, to introduce someone, uh, September is, uh, absentee, this is, attendance awareness month, sorry.
That's the opposite batch.
I'm trying, I, I'm, I was nervous, like, uh, Sabrina Anderson's here, she's our community liaison with the school. I asked her to come in, be kind of talk back, I kind of been helping around with the school, with the trouble projects. Um, so, if you come to speak on kind of some of the things that we do within the school, and we run into your proclamation and support of what has been doing, uh, this one. The tenants, so, go ahead, Sabrina. Go ahead.
You're coming.
Um, hello, I'm Sabrina Anderson, who made on, for, uh, Brookfield local schools, and, uh, just to, um, reiterate what, uh, Mr. Stedden's talked about, uh, tenth, September. Is attendance awareness, and so, being you to the community and the district, trying to bring, bring, uh, and one of, a part of my job is attendance. Um, so, I'm gonna bring more awareness around and get more community support, so that the families, this is a community, uh, concern, that we want the kids at school, because when they're at school. They're getting the life skills to think and be successful outside of school. And so, uh, by us partnering on this, and, uh, some of the other things we're doing to bring awareness, is we have, uh, partnering with the school counselors for the Say Something Week. Where we're gonna say hello on Monday, where all the students are, or have their name tags, and they're, the, the idea is for staff and students to say hello to someone that they know. They may not know, or don't know, so that way, we can kind of start to, again, bridge those gaps, as to why our students aren't coming to school, to make them feel more comfortable, and make them feel safe. Um, when they come to Brookfield Elementary. Um, we're partnering with State of the Game, uh, the Cleveland Browns, uh, foundation, I'm sorry, if you're a Pittsburgh fan. But we are partnering with the Cleveland Browns. Um, they're supporting us by giving us, uh, nice little things to use as incentives for the kids, to motivate them to come to school, um, for, uh, around attendance. And they're giving a lot of support on the data, and those kind of things, and ways that we can kind of prove attendance at school. We don't know if it's gonna work, but doing nothing is not an option, um, and so, and that's what's been happening. So, trying to do some things a little bit different, trying to get some synergy with the students and the parents around attendance, and why it's important, and, you know, hopefully it improves. Um, because what, like, again, what we've been doing, or what's been happening, hasn't been working, so, do you have any questions?
We definitely keep, we recommend it. We appreciate it, as, as, we, we, you know, this is, she's in the school quite a bit, we try to couple and, and be one group with our school, so that, because we're, we're in it together. Our community is our school, and our school is our community.
Absolutely.
So, we appreciate anything you can do to make that better, and, uh, we applaud your efforts.
So, real quick, to, to kind of hit you back, I don't know if you want me to read all this, I feel, I admit to be prepared to do so, but if not, uh, we have a proclamation. Just kind of stating, you know, that we are in support of what, what, what schools are, are doing, uh, so we, we had written up some, just saying, I'd like to give it to you, if that's okay.
Do you want to, do you want to?
I think, yeah, there's a picture, there you go. I hope you guys, you're gonna be getting some breath, I mean, I don't know.
Cleveland Browns' shirt.
Yeah, well, I feel that.
Our horse level. It's not level. It's not level?
After the pictures taken.
Yeah. Do you want me to flush that?
How about that, turn me up for that?
Is there? Sorry, okay, this one, actually.
We didn't think, we wanna make it so that it's all.
Is it level?
Yes.
Your side.
Okay, uh, at this point, if there are any comments from the public in general, at this point, we'll take them, uh, you know, flesh the comment, we, we should, your name, and where you're from, and your.
Area seven nine one, Times Street. I've been having a problem with a neighbor for more than five years. It's, uh, affecting a immediate neighborhood, multiple homes. Guy, he has, right in his head, uh, he's trying to move his fence on my property without a surveyor, a survey. I told him I have no problem with moving it. Show me a survey, from what kind of certified. He's, he's in the process of moving his, his fence, and he's, uh, said if I have a problem with it, I can pay the survey. I wanna know if I can do it.
Uh, Chief, help it off?
Our guys have been down there, correct?
Yep. Mr. Dean, we found him last, which was twenty-third, last month.
What did he say about that? Because I think he had time to approach them, and I don't know if he'd come down.
Mr. Dean told him it wasn't impossible to move the fence, and that's when he told me that he would, uh, move it, and I would pick for the survey by, uh.
Okay, um, if you can stick around after being off, perhaps you can see what you can do, and somebody down there.
I thank you, Mark.
Sir, just, this is a, and, from the perspective of the township, and I, I sympathize what you're saying. I was told one time, though, by an older trustee, it's very difficult when you have a neighborhood, you need to get involved in. If it's something illegal, it's a whole different pro, uh, process.
It's affecting all the neighbors.
And, and I, and I, I understand that, and the only thing is, when we do, then we, as trustees, have to choose sides, although it seems like the obvious side. Well, and, and Chief, to help you, maybe we, we're all, whatever we can do.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir, you're very good, sure, Tom.
Thanks for coming, and to me, with the first Monday, every month, it's not a whole.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Tom Scramble, I live on Wolf's Drive, and, uh, just wanna commend the, uh, the street guys with the new asphalt. I mean, talk about pleasant for them to be around, very little interruption, really. Happy with the road, uh, and, and also the, the snow removal crews over the, I've, I've been living here for eleven years, and, uh, I mean, they're, they're always there. I get up in the morning, the snowplows already been there, back when we had snow.
Don't say that too much. Why have you?
Glad to be here. Yeah, yeah, and I was worried about that, the, uh, sewer manhole collar, I said, man, I hope they come back.
They gotta come back.
But, but you had said that, and I said, oh, they gotta raise it up.
Any additional public comments? What's he calling?
I'll call it, and we can see the longer. I will, we'll work on doing that meeting, the change, the only seventeen, but the other meetings, I would like to discuss, obviously, the ARPA meeting, and we, is, is anybody around, like, maybe next week, or this week? Try to send one in sooner or later, or maybe next week, or maybe, earlier in the week?
You check with these other two, and I'll make myself, then, I'm not flexible.
I know there's a two-hour delay on a little late from school, but after that, I'd like to make a work. Dana, can we have, if you meet with Dan, and you kind of go over all the things that we already discussed, and we, we recommended resolutions on? Yeah, I can say it.
Yes. That we could do that prior to the meeting?
So, let's.
That what you said?
Yeah, for like Monday, for that discussion, I was like, I have like, base two of them.
No.
Because I don't know about you guys, you don't get nervous if it is that we have to, have to use the contract.
Good.
Um, so, sixteenth-ish?
Sixteenth, in the week.
Because the seventeenth is Tuesday, that's one of the meetings, Jamie, the nineteenth was that other meeting, so if you could do tentative, we are from the sixteenth.
Done.
Uh, school drop-offs at ten, maybe, I see you're by like, ten.
So, you're by, eleven o'clock.
Okay, so that's ARPA. The other thing I wanted to just, real quick, there was a policy conversation on some things, I'd like to, to have a policy meeting.
A specific or a policy for the general?
Policy, just a policy, travel policy, because we have another department that travels, so we don't want to make sure that it is.
Yeah, the, the only thing, uh, Dana can help me here, on our policy, when I, when I look through that specific one, the amount that's allowed, uh, for Dana to eat, which is, which is really low.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, so like.
I've adjusted that since nineteen seventy-four.
Right, that's it, yeah, so do we revisit that, maybe just sooner than later, um, I mean, that just needs to be, you know, next week, maybe, you know, maybe after, kind of thing, but. So, look at that, would be nice to have that kind of, and to make it a little bit more streamlined for you, right, if we put it. Um, so, just on the back of the case, we're gonna discuss it later, but, those are just two things that kind of, like.
You, you don't want to, just, you don't?
No, I said, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the ARPA, because we've all been.
Yeah, and then we could, we could go from there, I mean, as far as, if you wanna call, we don't have to call it a meeting, if you wanna call a meeting. Just, we'll, we'll make it public.
Yep, perfect, but then the ARPA will start there, just things that we've already discussed in our last ARPA.
Yep.
We have some, okay, perfect, that's it.
Yeah, I got a couple things, one is, uh, this past, on August thirty-first, they had the sixty-mile garage sale. Uh, which our office coordinator provided us a report, I'd like to read reports, and she went through that, doing this. We had the green, and we rented space on the green, if it's anywhere down around seven, of course, but this is one, that we kind of, she's taken, this is one of her, the projects. She sold thirty-four regular spots, one food vendor spot, uh. Uh, last year, sixty one spots and two food vendors. So part of it, I believe, was, you know, when you have a yard sale, selling stuff, usually come back next year for a yard sale. So that might have been some, the weather was very iffy. In fact, it got raining, I think, if we get it. Uh, so she had three hours of overtime and two hours of straight time for, uh, candy of our custodian who helped with that project. She collected three hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, the total profit was three oh five eighty five after wages. Uh, she does, she says, I do believe that the weather played a huge factor in the amount of vendors that we had. But it was nice to see we had a meeting with the trustee meeting up there. Uh, it was nice to see people coming through. Uh, like, once again, you dodge the weather, you know? You never know when it comes to that, but Tabitha Dixon did a great job again. She's taken on several projects that, they were her ideas, not ours. She's done well. Um, the other thing is, and, um, I don't want this to sneak into Brookfield Township without anyone knowing, so I'm going to bring it up every time I get a chance. Somebody's trying to put an injection well in Brookfield Township once again. Uh, if you remember, some down on Rock Seven, but, you know, mobile home park, that kind of fell apart literally. Uh, that company has decided that maybe it was such, wasn't such a good idea. Uh, the one model is at the highest place in Trumbull County. It's at the old radar base, about seven mile and road. At the top, uh, there's a company named Select Water that's trying to put an injection well in. Somebody had attempted to put one in before, so the, the infrastructure is there. Uh, but they did have some issues with it and I don't know exactly what they were with it working on. So I, as part of the board of trustees, I've been working with the Trumbull County Commissioners, if you saw on the paper at all. Uh, it's a, a strange setup up there. They're, they have a, what, they have a water tower. Trumbull County has a water tower up there. Uh, the nine one one center is putting in a Marx radio system. Uh, one of the reasons it's the highest part of Trumbull County. So they're, they're putting some money into the infrastructure up there. Uh, so I found out in the meantime that where this injection well property is, it's not actually, but somewhat landlocked by two properties that the Trumbull County Commissioners own. So I went to them representing us to the board and asked them, maybe they're going to put an injection well in, but maybe we can stop them. Tell them they can't use, they can't go across your land, Trumbull County land, to put this injection well. So I've been in front of them several times. They made a resolution. This individual had gone upon itself to access his property via the county property without any much permission. The Trumbull County Commissioners voted about a month ago to not allow him to access his property through theirs. They put cease and desist order in, so he wasn't allowed to do it. Um, and his next attempt was to run an electrical line, which is quite controlled, uh, quite involved, uh, running new power lines and everything that's involved to that property where he would be able to go around the Commissioners, but he had to go through the county. They voted at their last meeting to, uh, not allow them to use that, uh, electrical service. They were going to go with a separate one. Actually cost the county more money. Uh, but we have, it's been a two to one vote and we have two Commissioners. And I'm going to name them. They were Maro Camila Mesa and Nikki French Co. They voted for, supported Brookfield Township in this endeavor. And I thanked them at the meeting. It's been publicized, but I find it, I shouldn't say, uh, that I'm surprised. For some reason, uh, injection wells sneak into communities. There hasn't been much publicity. Uh, Joe had in his paper this, this month, there was several little articles in the Tribune uh, about this process and, and, and I, I can't speak for the other two trustees, but I'm pretty sure they're on the same path. But I can tell you one thing, if I do nothing else, in, in my whole term of being a trustee, then I'll fight this injection well I will. If I have to stand up there with a sign myself, which I did in the last one, uh, this is going to endanger our community. And I won't go into total details where there's a businessman that's advocating doing this, who has other business in Brookfield. And, and I'm quite, um, concerned, uh, of, of the involvement of this. I don't want it to come here. I'm going to yell as loud as I can. We don't know, the thing about an injection well is they, they pump a fluid underneath us, up to nine thousand PSI. They don't tell you what it is. They don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Uh, and the reason why I, I know a little bit about it is when I was a fireman, we researched it because I had to take that fluid in a, in a vehicle, but either a train or a, a car, a truck, tanker truck. And they have to transport it. And the thing is, they're bringing this up, this, we don't know what it is from another state here. And there's a reason why, because there's not a lot of limit in Pennsylvania and New York. So they bring that, from their fracking process, they bring it into Ohio, we're right across the state line, and they inject it. Uh, but those vehicles, if you ever see a vehicle on the road with a tanker truck, it has a four digit number one. It's, it's called a placard. And the fire chief can tell you about this. It's an NFPA system or, or, or Ust, U daughter.
Passant.
Right, so it identifies what that substance is, gasoline, a certain thing, propane. They can't placard the stuff that comes from an injection well because they don't know what it is. But there has been accidents with those trucks en route and the EPA has been able to, from that process, get a sample of what was there. And I know for one chemical, I remember the top of my head is benzene, which is carcinogenic. And they're, they're taking this, at least just benzene, to many other dangerous chemicals and injecting this under us. Well, it's bad enough they're doing it in our township. The highest point, number one, there's wells there. People have, actually have, they have wells and they probably bring their water from. And the school district is within one thousand feet of this well. And if you're familiar with the school district, they just, they just, it's remediate, remediation there because it's that shale underneath and it's shifting. So let's inject some pressure underneath this shale and see what's going to happen. Uh, it's a dangerous, uh, process to even think. And for somebody that wants to make a few hundred thousand dollars, I would say a few dollars, uh, to do that and, and to endanger all of us, shame on. And, uh, I'm going to fight the fight until whatever it takes to stop them doing it. So, fill you in, what's your?
Thank you, Dan. Just a couple of quick comments, uh, if I was serious, if you really have a hand with retired fire people for, if you're worried about, first of all, you want some place to work. Thank you for stepping up and again, tough finding full time, but it will take a whole hard round, especially experience a few of your colleagues. So hopefully you have pretty worried about, I can do that for you, Chief. And then, uh, last thing about paying, you know, this, is it eight miles, Jenny?
Yes.
Maybe about eight miles, but doesn't count if you get on Brookfield Avenue in our township this year. So what we do, we're going to pay anywhere from two to three, not eight miles every year. But what a difference it makes. So I know we talk about paying a lot and it's a part of our community. Uh, I know we have to pay your taxes or do Monday. I know it's going to hurt, I have that election, but, you know, like the concept of scale is well worth it. Thank you. And, uh, today we're in a meeting. We had a vote from fire department, we advertised that on Monday eleven. So it was welcome to join us. That's it. Motion for adjournment. Sweet. Thank you.
Here it is.
It went through.
Yeah. Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the hospital and I brought my winner. Oh. Everybody got this barrier?